Okay, folks, we're gonna call this meeting to order. And it's gonna be a little different tonight because you'll note that I'm wearing a mask. That's what happens when you go on vacation. You know, you get a mask, right? Anyway, I don't want anybody else to be infected with what I am. So I've asked Eileen to go ahead and share the meeting. So I'll call it to order and then she'll take over. Roll call. Kathy Pop? Here. Jason Arx?
Here.
Lynn Parrott?
Here.
Todd Casper?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
The first item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing resolution twenty-three oh four, conditional use permit for tidal wave car wash at sixteen fifty-one Progressive Parkway. And we have the gentleman speaking for the car wash. On the. So we'll start our staff presentation, Joe.
Yeah, this is a request for the property. Basically, it's located between Arby's and Pioneer Property Management. It's an acre and a half lot, has frontage on Progressive Parkway and Business Highway one fifty-one. All access to the property vehicular wise will be from Progressive Parkway. But they're requesting, they'd like to purchase it and then construct a car wash, or as they call it, a car spa on that property. So I, basically, I included some pictures in the packet. It's from the establishment down in Dubuque, the front of Coles. But from what I can tell, looking at that property down there and the one that's proposed here, it seems to be very similar. The layout is slightly different. There's multiple buildings on there. There's kind of the main kiosk as you pull in to pay for it. Then there's the main car wash building, which is approximately eighteen feet wide by a hundred and forty-seven feet deep. Then they've got some enclosures for the equipment, garbage enclosure, and then some canopies, which essentially are some vacuum stalls within the property itself. So the vehicles will enter from Progressive Parkway from the north, go through the building and then exit to the south. And then they can go through and either use the vacuum facilities or just exit the property to the north. So kind of the main reason this is, this type of use is a conditional use permit is it gives us an opportunity to make sure that location is all right. So it's not too close to residential properties or other properties that might be concerned about the noise or the traffic. So this is a good location from that standpoint. We also want to make sure that there's enough vehicle stacking space so that the vehicles aren't backed up onto the street if they're waiting to use the facility. This layout does have plenty of room for vehicles to do that. We also want to make sure that they're not exiting right from the car wash to the street. So in the winter, if they're still dripping, that that water does not end up on the public sidewalk or the street. So in that case, this layout also works well for that concern. So it appears that the layout, the design would meet all of our standards in the ordinance. As this went through the plan commission, they did recommend approval, but a couple of items that were brought up just to make sure that it's addressed. They did recommend approval with the condition that sidewalks be installed along both street frontages of the property. The preliminary site plan only showed one of them. And then there was some concern about the stormwater management that was gonna be able to meet our ordinance requirements for lot coverage to be served by the regional pond. And Howard clarified a little bit, but it appears that their lot coverage requirements are well within our guidelines or the requirements of that pond. And it appears also the covenant, so they should be good to go in that regard as well. So those were the two concerns that the plan commission had. At last meeting, there was a question that came up regarding the water as far as the chemicals that are used. So Howard asked to have information.
Okay, thank you. Yes, just to confirm that, yes, the impervious surface coverage is below the levels for the regional pond. So there is no requirement for additional stormwater management on site. They're actually just under seventy percent coverage in the regional pond can do up to eighty-five percent lot coverage. We believe that the covenants say eighty percent, so they're even below that as well. As far as the water issues go, they do in fact have phosphates in their chemicals that they use. And some of the, some of the chemicals are high and low pH. The, the issue here is that they use the chemicals in very small quantities. Or I mean, they're diluted so that, you know, they may have a quart of, of concentrated solution in a hundred gallons, as an example, where it's, where the concentration of the chemicals, the phosphorus is low and also any high or low pH chemicals are buffered so that they fall within our, our established range. They did agree that if, if, if we wish that they would put a a manhole for sampling so that we can take samples to confirm that everything is meeting our specifications. So if the council still has a, as an issue or a concern, you may wish to add a condition to the approval that they meet all the requirements of chapter eight of our municipal code, the sewer service code, and that would cover BOD, biological oxygen demand, that would cover pH, that would cover total solids, that would cover phosphorus, that would cover all of that. So, so just adding that as a condition would would cover it. You know, they're required to do so anyways, but if you wish to emphasize it, that would be the way to do it.
The next item would be for the applicant to make a statement, Mr. Nowak. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Hey there, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Frankly, I don't have much to add. I think Joe, Howard, all you guys covered it very well. From our company, Cage, we work with Kensington, who's developing these across the Midwest right now. And this, quite frankly, is one of the most ideal sites I've, I've worked on for. You know, kind of case in point, what Joe and Howard were saying is being less than the impervious area that's required. So it should actually be a benefit to your stormwater systems once everything gets developed. And we're, we're happy to work with you on chapter eight, the sewer code. I think like Howard was saying, the dilution of any pH or any chemicals will either provide you guys with data or design calculations. Or if, if necessary, we can add an inspection manual, if that ends up being the route we go. But all in all, nothing, nothing else really to add, but happy to answer any questions that maybe may arise.
Access public statements in favor. I don't have anyone who's registered or public, public statements against. Also, no one has registered or public statements in general. So council discussion, any questions or comments from the council? Ken?
Yes, I have a question about the narrative. And I'm looking at the third paragraph of the narrative. Excuse me, I asked about this last time. And it says that the proposed use will promote water conservation, conservation and it will utilize a sophisticated water reclamation system, comma, computer controlled systems and high pressure nozzles and pumps which significantly minimize, minimize the amount of fresh water needed to provide a quality exterior wash. Then it says, another benefit of the proposed use is that the professional wash will empty filtered waste into the sewer system for further treatment. So my question here is this professional wash will enter empty into the waste into the sewer system. Now, is that the sewer system for the city of Platteville? Do you understand my voice and my question?
I believe so. If I could, you know, clarify what that paragraph is alluding to is some car washes use the chemicals and then discharge them immediately to the city. Title Wave does not do that. What Title Wave has is a water reclamation system. And that system helps mitigate any of the chemicals that are being discharged. And so it's saying that's more efficient and uses less water. That's what the intent there is.
Well, it, it, it is, I'm looking at the wording and it says, when I now I read off here about the system for further treatment, period, versus introducing harmful cleaning chemicals and phosphates from the road film into the storm drain that is intended to deliver runoff, rain runoff into the rivers and streams. So
Yes.
Your system is not gonna deliver any wastewater chemicals supposedly into the stream of Roundtree?
Exactly. So that would be considered a storm sewer. And I think it was, actually, I think it was Joe who mentioned the dripping off of the, the cars. So that's what that's alluding to. That will not happen with this system. Any chemicals will be used, will be treated through the sanitary system as they should. And like we talked about with the inspection manhole, we will make it a point to be within the city of Platteville's required limits.
I'm trying to figure out how this system works. That's, that's my basic question. How is this system gonna work?
System's gonna work where any of the cleaning products that get used on the car will be treated through the sanitary system and they will not get discharged to any streams or any waterways or into the public right of way, for example. If, if your concern is that the chemicals couldn't be discharged harmfully, I would go back to what Joe said about ensuring that this development meets chapter eight to ensure no chemicals are discharged above the, the limits of the city.
But there will be some chemicals coming from your car wash.
Nothing that would be above the limits. I, I would say it's almost if it's within your code, it's within the negligible limits. If we were to exceed the amounts, then we could explore other options in, in terms of inspection manholes like Joe had mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Right, seeing none, I would need a motion to close the public hearing.
A move to close the public hearing.
Jason and Ken, Candace will vote.
Pop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Doss? Motion carries.
Right, next would be common council action. And you may want to remember what Howard said about adding the, would you name that chapter again, please, Howard?
Chapter eight.
Is there a motion?
I have a motion.
All right.
I motion that we approve this development as it's been presented to us tonight. And I believe that he's already made it very clear that he's staying within chapter eight of the municipal code. And Howard's also made it clear that he has already stayed within that municipal code. Therefore, making this extra language unnecessary, Howard?
That's up to you.
I, I would conclude, Todd, that it is necessary because while, while the presenter tonight owns this car wash, he's made it clear that he will stay within the limits. I believe this would extend to the property if it were sold. And maybe the next person who owns it would not be quite as civic minded about that. So I believe including it, since he doesn't mind, helps us if the, if the car wash is sold and the next owner perhaps doesn't comply.
Very well, then include the language as necessary. Thank you, Mr. Nowak, for considering our community to bring a business into it. We appreciate that.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Candace will vote.
Pop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Nowak. Thank you. Next item is consideration.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Excuse me. Consideration of the consent or agenda, the following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion and act. First is council from March tenth, special council meeting and also March fourteenth, our regular payment of bills, appointments to boards and commissions.
Not tonight.
None this evening. Licenses, a temporary class B license to sell fermented malt beverages to Roundtree Gallery at one twenty West Main Street on Friday, April twenty-eighth, from four until seven P M for artist reception. Second is temporary S B license to sell fermented malt beverages to Roundtree Gallery at one twenty West Main Street on Friday, May twelfth. Someone for the exquisite half artist reception. Operating licenses to sell or serve alcohol in the packet. And fourth is a taxi vehicle license. Have some permits, a street closing permit, Main Street from Chestnut Street to Water Street for the third annual Platteville Inn on Main by the Southwest Wisconsin Auto Club on Thursday, July fifteenth, eight P M. And a run walk permit for the Kiwanis Edge or Crawl five K walk run on Saturday, May sixth, starting at nine A M.
Eileen, if I could just interject for just a small moment, there is a typo that we discovered tonight under the permit, street closing for the Platteville Cruise Inn on Main. It should be Saturday, not Thursday.
So moved.
On my second, we'll vote.
Pop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is citizen comments, observations and petitions, if any. I have none this evening except for an item that's coming up on the agenda later. So we'll ask you to speak. What's in the packet? Museum Board, Nichols. The thing I have to add this evening is that there is one more lyceum which is taking place this coming Sunday. So if you haven't had a chance to sign up for that, please contact the museum and you can still listen to that. Listen, fire commission, cop?
Nothing further to add.
Commission on aging, cop?
Nothing further.
Sorry, preservation commission, Killian?
No addition.
And also the taxi and statistics are in the packet. Anybody have any questions on those? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to the first action item, which is contract one twenty-three, Jefferson Street Reconstruction. Joe, or Howard, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right. This is our major street project for the year. This will reconstruct Jefferson Street from Madison to the cul-de-sac. And it also includes replacement, relocation and upsizing of sanitary and storm sewer from Case Street through the backyards to Jefferson Street. We opened three bids on March third. Low bidder is temporarily excavating with the low bid of nine fifty-nine, seven thirty and twenty cents. Their most recent project with us was the South Court Street Water Main Replacement in twenty twenty. They did well. We have someone who was, it was that project. And so we budgeted the one point two million for the entire project. The entire project would come in ninety-six thousand under budget, mostly in the water and sewer portion. The Water and Sewer Commission moved to approve the award of the contract for their portion of the, of the contract. So staff is recommending that we award this contract temporarily excavating at the bid price.
Questions for any council members? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Contract one dash twenty-three, Jefferson Street Reconstruction to temporarily excavating for the bid price of nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
And then the second, and we'll vote.
Pop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols? Motion carries.
Session, the first article is Emmy Roth's right of first refusal. Nicola?
Thank you. Back in two thousand and twelve, Emmy Roth entered into a development agreement with the city of Platteville, which included the purchase by Emmy Roth of approximately nineteen acres located in Texan increment district number six in the industrial park. The purpose of the development agreement was the construction of a cheese manufacturing and storage building as well as certain related site improvements. Based on the value of the constructed facility and jobs created by Emmy Roth, Emmy Roth received the land for a nominal amount of a dollar an acre. The development agreement was signed on April the tenth of two thousand and twelve and it was accompanied by a construction deadline and repurchase agreement or C D R A. And the C D R A indicated that it was the intention of the city of Platteville to sell lands only for the purpose of development of industry and or business within the M four Applied Technology District. Emmy Roth, as the buyer, expressed their intent to make improvements to the property in accordance with the city of Platteville's zoning ordinances. In the staff note, you have some language that was excerpts from the agreement. And you can see there that there was a paragraph related to the construction deadline, which reads, in the event the buyer does not undertake expansion of the then existing manufacturing and storage facilities before the tenth annual anniversary date of the development agreement, the city may repurchase from the buyer that portion of the land conveyed to the buyer which has not been used for the expansion of the buyer's manufacturing and or storage facilities or to support such expansion, such as parking, compliance with zoning laws or regulations or other improvements or purposes. So so the city has been working with Emmy Roth on this deadline. And during two thousand and twenty-two, at the council's direction, our former C manager worked with Emmy Roth management on a new development agreement which addressed the future expansion requirements, given that the ten year deadline was rapidly approaching. But the parties did not come to terms on a new agreement. Subsequently, the expansion land was offered to Emmy Roth to buy without a developer agreement at a price per acre which reflected current market rates. Emmy Roth counted this offer at a significantly reduced amount, which the council then rejected. So as the city prepared to exercise the repurchase of the expansion land, Emmy Roth expressed an interest in a right of first refusal. Our council direction staff worked with the city's attorney, Bill Cole, to draft this right of first refusal for a fee that reflects the city's attorney fees accrued to date regarding this matter. If the right of first refusal is approved by the council, staff will present, will present the document to Emmy Roth for their acceptance. Are there any questions?
Questions, anyone? Right.
Animal Trust Fund principal request. I think Nicola's going to do that one.
It's me again. Okay, thank you. So after the past year or more, Dr. Carrie Schaefer, who's here in the audience this evening, and other supporters of the Grant County Humane Society have been searching for a suitable building to establish a separate site for the animal shelter. The shelter is currently located in a building shared with the Lancaster Veterinary Clinic, and it's not adequate for the needs of the community. A very generous commitment has been made, a financial commitment by a private donor to help fund the purchase of a suitable building. With this financial commitment, the group has now been able to make an offer on a building in Platteville and needs to raise approximately four hundred and thirty thousand dollars by May the first. Dr. Shaver, over these past many months, has been in discussion with the Freudenweig Animal Trust Fund Committee regarding use of the fund balance to support the building purchase. That would be the principle that was originally established, along with earnings and interest. The committee is in favor, the Freudenweig Committee is in favor of using the fund for this purpose. The use would be in keeping with the wishes of the benefactor, Ms. George Anne Freudenweig, who desired her bequest be used, and to quote her will, to establish and maintain an animal shelter. And it would provide a beneficial service to the community. The city's agreement with the Community Fund of Southern Wisconsin indicates that although the fund was irrevocably transferred to the community fund, the fund principal balance may be spent for major animal related expenses with a two thirds vote of the Platteville City Council members present at the meeting. This language was included, most likely, I think, to abide by the terms of the memorandum of understanding made between the city and the George Anne Freudenweig estate, that M O U is included in the packet. If the council votes in favor of closing the fund and dispersing the proceeds to the Grant County Humane Society for the building purchase, a letter of request will be presented to the Community Fund Board of Directors. At January thirty-first of this year, the available fund principal with earnings was approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With this funding, an additional two hundred and seventy thousand would be needed for the building purchase. And that amount is anticipated to be funded through fundraising or financing. Ongoing expenses of the Humane Society may be offset through revenue generated from pet boarding, from pet daycare and potentially from a small retail space.
We do have a number of people who have asked to speak on this. So I'm going to have those individuals come to the podium. I'll call your name and ask you to give your name and address. So the first is Carrie Schaefer.
Hello, thank you. I didn't actually need to speak. I just put that down in case you had questions. If anybody had questions. Is it too soon?
Might give us a little bit of background on what your.
Sure, yeah. So the Grand County Humane Study came into existence in two thousand and fourteen. Prior to that, in the late sixties, early seventies, the state of Wisconsin mandated that every county be responsible for at-large dogs. Those at-large dogs needed to be taken to a facility, kept safe, and told either their owners could claim them or not, and then they were given for adoption or however that, whatever happened. So back then, Lancaster Veterinary Clinic was asked by the county to do that, and they did it. Um, we moved out of uh, an old building into town in two thousand and fourteen, and at that time, we built in six kennels for dogs and six kennels for cats to um, house the at-large dogs and develop a humane society. And by developing a humane society, we gave, we got a five oh one C three status, which helped with donations. Um, we could take surrenders. People could get some tax relief by donating, and we just expanded the community outreach of that program. So um, since two thousand and fourteen, uh, we figured we're averaging around four hundred, averaging about four hundred animals placed a year, and we're probably turning away six hundred. We get calls every day, multiple times a day, to take in surrendered dogs, surrendered cats, animals running loose, so on and so forth. So the need is there. Um, we have looked in many places. We've looked in Platteville. We've looked in Lancaster. Mostly those two areas because of the centrality, the central location. Um, so we found the building here in Platteville, and we're really hopeful that we can make it happen.
My question, since I don't go to the shelter, my other members of the family do. Where is the shelter located now?
Right now, it's housed inside Lancaster Veterinary Clinic in Lancaster.
In Lancaster, okay. So you found a place tentative here in Platteville?
Correct.
Thank you.
Can, can you explain to us, how, how is the um, Humane Society funded?
All through donations. Um, there's a little bit of money that comes from adoptions. Doesn't offset the cost of the adoption, but it, there is some funding that way. Um, the at-large dogs, so we are still, the Humane Society will continue to take the at-large dogs um, going forward, even if it's in Platteville. That typically is managed by the Sheriff's Department, so they pick up, or, or your municipalities will do it too. So in Lancaster, the city of Lancaster, city police do it often. Um, we want to continue to do that. Um, and we will hope to expand an army of volunteers that can help with all the different communities, take some of that transportation out of the Sheriff's Department venue, um, and put it into the Humane Society's uh, responsibility by using volunteer groups in the different communities to make it truly grant county-wide. There is a little bit of dollars from the county, so the county, for every at-large dog that is not claimed, the county gives a stipend to the Humane Society for the four-day care that they are required to oversee. So back in the early, whenever it's happened, um, the, when they mandated that the at-large dogs had to go to a facility, they also asked the county to cover those costs. At that time, it was for ten days. So that ten-day time span gave the owners ten days to claim the animals. And um, if they didn't, if the owner claimed them, they had to pay the cost. If they went unclaimed, the county then helped the facility that it was housed in cover those costs, food, water, care, et cetera. So now it's changed to four days. So the county is responsible for four days of care for those at-large dogs. If they're go, if they are claimed, the owner covers the cost. If they're unclaimed, the county pays a stipend. There's a tiny amount of money that comes from the county board, um, a little bit of money that comes from the adoptions, and a lot of money that comes from donors. All proceeds stay local. Any donation given is used only in Grant County. We don't have enough to share with other people at this point.
I have a question for the Chief of Police. Would the police department be using the the shelter as far as if animals were picked up, where would you take the animals? A dog, a cat, stray cat? People, some people leave, they, they throw the cat out, and they'll, they'll take it home. So how would the chief, uh, as a chief of police, how would this be working as far as in Platteville? Would you make use of the shelter? Do you make use of the shelter now?
We don't currently. We contract with the Platteville Veterinary Clinic for housing stray animals.
Would you be doing, would you contract with the shelter in the future?
We would make use of it. That would be our intent. And the prospect of having it in Platteville would hold great appeal.
Okay, thank you.
You have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering in terms of like, um, how many animals you anticipate being able to serve with the new building? Do you kind of have a rough estimate? I know you said like, you were able to do four hundred.
Yeah, um. That's in the works, in the sense that when we were looking in Lancaster, I think we had a seven thousand square foot estimate, and so we had kennel space. This is an eleven thousand square foot building. So um, I'm not entirely sure. I could answer that better when we have a design. Um, but it's, I, I have told other people quadruple what we're doing now, times four. It's for sure. I mean, it's a lot of space.
Yeah, yeah.
We hope to do many. Um, a lot of Humane Societies will do transfers, and that's something that's nice about the Humane Society community across the United States is, is that right now we have no means, and we get emails almost weekly about, you know, Rock County had a home they went into and found fifty cats. Can you take a couple? You know, northern Wisconsin, I found, we, they had a puppy mill that they took over and had seventy-eight little dogs. So that kind of thing would be available to us.
But no-kill facility?
We are no-kill for space.
I'm, I'm sorry, say that again.
We are no-kill for space. And there is never an animal that's euthanized. It can be there as long as it needs to be there, stays there until it finds a home, if it has a behavioral or a medical problem. Last year, we euthanized no animals.
Kathy? Or but, question, yeah, I know the, the building, where the building you're looking at, and the organization is a five oh one C three, does that mean that purchase will take that property off the tax rules?
Yes, that would be my understanding, correct.
Hannah, could you just speak? Name and address, please.
My name is Hannah Hawes. My address is two thirteen East Bird Street, Lancaster. Um, as kind of same as Carrie, I signed up to talk just in case there are any questions. I am the treasurer for the Humane Society, so I see over the financials. Um, really, my speech on this, I'm, of course, a huge animal lover. Don't think I would be, I, I, I wouldn't be a part of the board if I wasn't. We have, I've been a part of the board for two years now, and we have been, like Carrie said, searching for a building. We've been looking at multiple different avenues. And when this came up, it was kind of like a sigh of relief, a weight up of our shoulders, because not only is it, we can actually reach our goals a lot faster than if we were looking for a plot of land to build. So personally for us, but also for our communities too. Like Carrie said, we have a huge need to help more animals and be able to, I mean, even potentially have a few jobs too, that we could provide to the community. Nothing too big, so don't get too excited. There we are, five oh one C three. Um, but just being able to give back to the communities that have given so much to us as well, just means a lot to us too.
Uh, John Myers, is it? Name and address, please.
Uh, John Myers, uh, eighty seventy-one Irish Hall Road in. And uh, I grew up in Lancaster and was gone from there for about fifty years, but I've moved back to the area, and since I've been back, we've been looking for a site. And what we've found, finally found in Platteville, it's just perfect. I've got a building background and just, it's got everything that we were looking for. So I'm just gonna, I've got a statement here, kind of a more, a more personal note with the lady Georgine who left the money to this fund. So just gonna quick read this. I think myself and Georgine have a lot in common. We both made a large donation with the hope that it would make a difference in our community and Grant County. Both made the focus of that donation towards pets. I knew my donation would get our foot in the door and start the process of having our own building for the Humane Society. I also knew my donation would just be a starting point, and we would need more capital. I don't know if Georgine was thinking about the Humane Society, but I think if she saw the building that uh, we found right here in her community of Platteville, that she wouldn't hesitate to go all in and help with the purchase. And it sounds like the group that was in charge of the fund uh, did a good job of making it grow. But rather than spreading the funds out over a long period of time, the gift from Georgine would have a much greater impact as a lump sum. And I think if she was here, she would agree. So, that's what I got.
Dr. Jeff Robis, um, my address is nine four seven four Greenwood Road, Platteville. Out in the country now. Um, I actually knew Georgine Freud and Reich, and she was my client way back in late eighties, early nineties. I believe she passed away in nineteen ninety-three. So I've been the chair of the chairman of the Freud and Reich Animal Trust Fund for thirty years. So this golden opportunity, we've been waiting a long time. So I'll make it short and sweet. I hope you approve this, because this is what she wanted, and hoping we can do it. Thank you. Have any questions?
We have one other person who uh, did not say if she wanted to speak or not, but Jackie Keeler.
Hello.
Your name and address, please, Jackie.
Dr. Jackie Keeler, uh, forty-two sixty-three Little Platt Lane, Platteville. So I am a veterinarian at the Platteville Veterinary Clinic who has a non-written contract with the city. We are the pound for the city, so we receive animals from the police department um, at our clinic uh, that we work with. Uh, I'm also on the Freud and Reich Animal Committee, have been with Dr. Jeff for thirty years. The wording, as you probably already heard, is Georgine's goal was to produce or use the money for an animal clinic, animal shelter in the city of Platteville. Uh, so we've been working with that, not fulfilling it if it's up in Lancaster. So when this land came, this building came up in Platteville, this is what she has stated in her will for what this money has been for use. We have been using it for client education in this, in the city. We've been using it to sponsor uh, space for people who can't afford them. Uh, little things like that along the way. We've only been using the interest while it, the fund has been growing. But this is her primary goal. And yes, as you asked, uh, the police department, we would be more than happy to close the pound contract um, and have all of the animals go to the Humane Society in the future. Uh, that would be our goal, my goal, not only being on the committee for the Freud and Reich Fund, but also as the veterinarian at the Platteville Veterinary Clinic that runs the city pound. Any questions on either of those?
Questions, anyone? All right, thank you. So that will, this uh, will be on for action on the next agenda. Thank you all for speaking. Uh, Contract four twenty-three, Business one fifty-one, Bassinaw Storm Sewer Construction. Oh, sorry? Sorry, one more thing?
One more thing, and I don't know who to ask it of, but asking for these funds, and then they have to raise funds by May first, what happens if we, we say yes to this fund, and you don't get the funds on May first?
I don't think that the funds would be released until we knew.
Would that be part of the condition of that?
Uh, so the, the, the next step, if council were to approve, would be to present a letter of request to the Board of Directors of the uh, Community Fund. Now, that board also has jurisdiction over these funds. Um, and so it's not automatic with council approval that the, the, the board would agree to um, distribute the fund and close the fund. Um, and again, as you saw in the packet, there is some conflicting language in the agreement that was made with the city and with the community fund in that a part of it says it's an irrevocable transfer, but another part of it says that with a two-thirds vote of the council, those funds could be um, used for a special purpose. Uh, so, so the next step would be to present a letter to the board. Uh, we're hopeful to be able to manage that before the board meets. I think it's April the nineteenth. Um, so that would be after the eleventh, which is the next council meeting. Um, and then if they voted in favor, uh, then it would be coordinating to um, get those funds to the Humane Society for the express purpose of uh, contributing to the building purchase. Um, and, and if the remaining funds were not raised, the two hundred and seventy thousand, I think, uh, Dr. Schaefer would have to speak to, um, if there's any kind of uh, um, contingency plan for being able to purchase the building i-if those circumstances arose.
Do the name thing again? Okay, can tell I don't go a lot of these. Um, so coincidentally with this as well, I'm also the Realtor for the Great County Humane Society, so I know contract and everything else with that too. So proof of funds, we do have in the contract that we do have to provide, that we have the proof of funds two weeks prior to closing. As of right now, our contract is May nineteenth. Um, so essentially, it would be more, more ideally like May fourth, May fifth. We have to prove that. So within that, with the rest of the funds, we are all actively reaching out to other potential donators. Um, we are also meeting with zoning next week. Once we get our zoning approved, the seller has okayed us to do a huge fundraising event at the building as well. So we have plans and plans and plans to just nail this out and get the rest of those funds. And no way are we taking this lightly. We are actively talking to each other. We're reaching out to even small donations, all the way up to hopefully, I mean, we have a plan of, uh, Carrie has it all set up. Million dollars gets you the naming rights, and then you can buy five thousand, five thousand dollar donation would get you a kennel area as well, so all the way down to like two hundred dollars, get your names on a paper too. So we are actively and looking at getting our fundraising done. We know that this is a time-sensitive issue. If it comes into that date and we do not have the funds, then that's when we would go back and hopefully renegotiate with the seller, either, hey, we need like two more weeks to get the rest of our funds closed out, or, hey,
To get the rest of our funds closed out or hey, we weren't able to do the funds to do a whole cash purchase. He originally had talked about doing seller financing, so we have other options potential. So in the end, it could just take some renegotiating. I do know that if we do the seller financing, the purchase price would change a little bit. But we do have other options available and we went through all of those options.
Yes, thank you. Oh, gone to contract. Four twenty-three, business one fifty-one, fast and all storm sewer construction.
Okay, thank you. When we did the business one fifty-one safety project. They found a buried and plugged storm sewer line that was connected to previous storm sewer. Water must have come out somewhere because we never found it until this project. When the contractor connected the new storm sewer to this line, DOT did a temporary cleaning. And they created that rock lined hole that you can see there by fast and all so that. For now, when the water goes into the tube, it comes into the hole, fills the hole. And then spills over into the grass, goes under the tube, under their driveway and then. Then it goes down to the round tree. Now, Fastenal, they were, they were happy with how things were going because what they saw out in front of their building was a. Was a grassy swale that they could mow and maintain and do everything. Now there's a rock line hole that. Is less appealing and harder to maintain. We proposed a project to replace the hole with an inlet and a tube. Connecting over to the fast and all driveway. And we budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars for that. Upon further review. There's an approximately two hundred and fifty feet of tube upstream that is in poor condition and subject to plugging. The project was expanded, but the budget was not. That's my fault. There is an alternate bid that would connect. A tube from the fast and all driveway to the tube under the trail, clean up that area along there a little bit. We opened three bids, low bidder for the base bid only was G Pro excavating. At a little over fifty-four thousand dollars. With the alternate bid to continue it down to the trail. The low bidder changes to rural excavating at seventy-five, seven. So. We're over budget, so really there are two options at this point. One would be to reject bids. And potentially carry over that into two, twenty twenty-four budget additional money. In the twenty twenty-four budget process to do it next year. The other would be to find an alternate source of funding to allow completion of the project. Now, it's not ideal for the property owner, but it does allow the water to flow and. And it's not going to hurt anything until, if we wait until twenty twenty-four. If we look for alternate funding sources, it may compromise other projects that we have going on. You know, but then on the other hand, we don't know what prices are going to be in twenty twenty-four, so. So there's, there's those alternates at this point. Our recommendation would be that you pass a motion to reject all bids. With the intent to carry over the funding and potentially bund it. Budget additional funding. We're not putting that into the motion. So that it would not bind the council at any point. But that's, that's what we have. Delta three, Dan is here with, with the bid tab. And can answer any questions that you might have on, on the technical aspects of that. So that's what we have.
Questions, anyone? They know questions that will be on for action next time. Next item is contract fifteen twenty-three weed and grass mowing.
Yep, this would be for properties that are non-compliant with our ordinance regarding lawn growth. For the past few years, we've put it out for bids and there were no bidders, so city staff had been tasked to do that mowing. This year we did receive two bids. Holman Lawn Care, who took the lawn care portion of the business from G Pro Lawn Care. Was the low bidder. We do not have direct work history for this contractor, but if they're. If they were part of the G Pro. Lawn care business, I feel pretty comfortable with them. As I say in here. As we've done in the past, code enforcement inspector would inspect properties. If growth is over eight inches, the inspector places a door hanger. And sends a letter to the owner. They have five days to comply. If not, if they still haven't mowed the lawn, then. The contractor is called and they would. Then the owner would be billed for the contractor cost plus a fifty dollar admin fee. So there is no direct impact to the city. The property owner pays. The contractor costs and reimburses our costs through the admin fee. So I would recommend that we award the contract to the Holman Lawn Care.
Yep, I do. Director back to you, Howard. Can you tell us what the status is of the enforcement officer? I mean, how many hours a week? Is there somebody on board?
Yes, yes. Typically, it's been twenty hours a week during, yeah, during the winter. Increase during the summer months.
Okay, okay. Item, twenty twenty-two budget carryovers to twenty twenty-three budget amendment number.
So this is the time of year that we are closing up the books for twenty twenty-two, making our final adjustments. And it's also the time of year that we review projects that were budgeted in twenty twenty-two. And maybe did not complete in twenty-two and need to complete in twenty-three. Also, sometimes there are particular line items that may need to be carried over. And so we bring these requests to the council as a budget amendment. And those funds are then, if approved, carried forward into the new year with a two-thirds vote of the council. So you can see in the attachment to the staff note that there is a list of projects that's rather larger than usual. Reflecting supply chain issues and other issues that are, follow on effect from COVID. I'm just going to review those briefly with you. The first one is the camera, the citywide camera system. Police Department and other departments are involved in that project. The project did begin in twenty twenty-two, but is continuing. Police Department Opera Grant was used to cover thirty-five thousand dollars worth of the project that has been expended. And the hundred and forty thousand, that is a combination of. Opera funding and carries over from prior years. Is being requested to be carried over into twenty twenty-three. The fire department radio replacement project was originally budgeted with the hope of receiving a FEMA grant. That grant was not awarded, so the council motioned back in July twelfth of twenty twenty-two. To approve an RFP in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. The radios were ordered late summer of twenty twenty-two. But were not received until this year, so we're requesting to carry over the tax levy portion of the. Budget for that item. A thin overlay. Project that's funded by the wheel tax. The bid was awarded for the project. But there were two parts to it, a thick overlay in conjunction with the final paving of West Main Street. And the thin overlay on Second Street from Pitt to the city limits. After the installation of the township trail and CDBG sidewalk. And because of those, in the interconnectedness of those projects. The, those two overlay projects will actually take place in twenty twenty-three rather than twenty twenty-two. So we're requesting to carry over the unused portion of the wheel tax revenues. The sidewalk repairs were, received no bids in twenty twenty-two. And so we are requesting carryover of this project to combine with the twenty twenty-three budget for sidewalk repairs. And that project has already been bid and accepted. Well, the two and a half ton dump truck delivery of the truck was delayed due to supply chain issues. Also due to cost escalation of the dump truck, an additional fifty-five thousand dollars was included. In the twenty twenty-three CIP budget that the council adopted for combination of the hundred and eighty-five thousand. So request is to combine those funds to fund the payment off the bill when the truck is delivered. For the museum, some of the invoices for the preservation plan have yet to be received. So the carryover request there is to fund payment of those invoices. And then for the safety, security and air CIP project. The fire alarm rewiring and lightning proofing is scheduled for the spring of this year. And the antique weapon storage racking system was delivered and installed in February of this year. But requires carryover of thirty-four thousand three seventy-one from the original twenty twenty-two budget. The taxi van, and just excuse me while I scroll here. The twenty-two budget was for forty thousand with eight thousand coming from tax levy and thirty-two thousand from the Department of Transportation funding. Due to supply chain issues, the van was not delivered in twenty twenty-two and the cost also did increase. And the, and the city's twenty percent match therefore also increased to thirteen thousand five sixty. So the request is to carry over the eight thousand dollar tax levy and add that to the eight thousand. Tax levy in twenty twenty-three to cover the new match amount of thirteen thousand five sixty. For the airport, the project expenditures have not yet been invoiced and we're requesting to. Transfer the fifteen thousand from the twenty twenty-two budget. Along with the fifteen thousand from the twenty twenty-three budget to the airport in twenty twenty-three. We had proceeds and I apologize that the note on this item got cut off, but we had proceeds from the sale of a park's vehicle. Those proceeds were partially used to fund add-on equipment under the twenty twenty-two. Vehicle lease program with Enterprise Fleet Management, but there were some funds that were left over which are being requested. To be carried over. And then the senior center van donation of fifty-three thousand one hundred and five dollars was. Not used in twenty twenty-two because there was not a van available for purchase. So the request is to carry those over also into twenty twenty-three. So those cover the CIP fund, carryover requests. Before I go on to the general fund requests, is there any questions? On the CIP fund?
I have a request as far as the van. As far as the taxi bus van. When, when might that be coming? And also the senior center van donation, what's the? Possible time as far as that's coming?
Actually, the, the taxi van arrived a couple of weeks ago. So we, we have it, it's here, it's being processed. I, I. I'd have to look back, but I'm thinking that that taxi vehicle license was probably for that new vehicle. And so when it's prepared and all, and when DOT allows it to be. Put into service, it will be put into service.
And the cost of that was how much? Do you know that?
Yeah, the cost is known. That's, that's sixty-seven, seven forty-six that, that's in the, that's in the write-up here.
And then the other van is the, is that Bob?
Yes. What's your question, Ken?
Question is, is that van going to come or?
No, that van, we had a donation, the amount is slightly less than that for the van purchase. Unfortunately, we could not find a van. Well, we actually had thought we had found a van. And they informed us because of supply chain issues that we would not be able to get the van that we had ordered. And now, of course, the price of that van is probably another thirty thousand dollars, so we're well short. Of the funds we need for the van. Now, the donor who made the large significant donation for that van. We have actually been talking considerable amount of time with him and. We're hoping to go in a little bit of different direction. And possibly use a different van that he seemed to be happy with. As long as we have some type of handicap van that we can pick up. Those patrons who would like to visit that are, you know, wheelchair bound. And so the van that we're thinking about. Hopefully that will work at a considerably less amount of money. We also have a, the senior center has a current van that if that does not work out, that we can modify. That van to accommodate a wheelchair and still be within the donation amount. So that's kind of the avenue we're looking at now.
And as far as, I think. You, you told us already about the proceeds for sale of the park vehicle.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. So moving on to the general fund section of the carryovers. We typically carry over on the contingency line items in the city manager budget to help fund any unanticipated needs. In twenty twenty-three and I'm sure that our new city manager will appreciate having a little bit of contingency funds to work with. We are definitely in a, an environment where there seems to be a lot of unexpected needs. Also, we have seven hundred and fifty dollars available in the city club conferences and training line item from twenty twenty-two. That I'm requesting to carry forward into twenty twenty-three to provide funding for coaching. And also in the admin department, we have nine thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. Available in the IT outlay that we would like to put towards computer replacement in twenty twenty-three. In PD, we had a small amount to carry over towards the installation of a deadbolt on an evidence room door. That was ordered in twenty twenty-two but not installed as of the end of the year. And in the fire outlay budget, there was two thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars that was for. A single mobile radio that was ordered in conjunction with the RFP but not delivered until February of twenty twenty-three. And then finally, there was some remaining opera revenue funds in the library department. That were unspent at the end of twenty twenty-two and we're requesting to carry those over also into twenty twenty-three. So the totals are for the CIP fund, six hundred forty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. And for the general fund, eighteen thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars.
I have one question. Going to the city manager. Entries. Would you tell me the difference between the city manager wage benefit contingency and city manager contingency?
So I, yes, the wage benefit contingency is typically utilized. If there's a need that's associated with wages and benefits, those needs can vary. Since I am not city manager, but just the interim, I've never myself utilized those funds. So I'm not well-versed in, in, you know, what they might be used for. And then the contingency fund is for a variety of unanticipated needs. Provides the city manager with some flexibility if there's something that. Provides the city manager with some flexibility if there's something that comes up during the year that was not budgeted. In a particular line item, but is uh considered, you know, a, a, a needed use. It's not, it's not a large line item, but it does um provide some availability for all those things as they come up.
We're going back to the first one. Would that first one be a benefit to an individual or a?
Um, I believe that there can be occasions where um there may be an agreement that's made. Uh, as part of separation with an employee, sometimes it can be used for that.
Thank you.
Does have any questions? All right. The next act, swimming pool water tightness integrity proposal.
Well put. In December of twenty twenty two, uh, we had came before the council with information on the condition of the pool and the water usage. Issue and the Platteville Family Aquatic Center. That information included uh that the pool was last updated thirty years ago, nineteen ninety two. And at that time, the pool, two pools that were combined into one large pool, and then a large zero entry feature was added. Also, at that time, uh, there was upgrades to the pool house, the filtration system. And all of those that things needed to meet the new capacity. The new, the new pool then held about three hundred and ninety thousand gallons. Um. Research uh showed that the life expectancy for an in-ground pool of that size, when properly maintained. Can be about thirty to fifty years. Uh, and I might note that we are already at thirty years. It also shows that the properly maintained pool should be resurfaced every ten years. And resurfacing involves uh. Hydro blasting, sand blasting, then bond coating and chipping way old surface. Then a new polish is applied and a finished coat made of glass beads, glass exposed pebble quartz or polished finish. Or plaster is added. Um, we have no knowledge of that ever being done, and that should have been done at least three times. Okay? Um, we also made note that uh. Some of the slippery surfaces that have been uh noted by other uh constituents uh that probably would have been. Uh, eliminated if in fact those would, things would have been done. Uh, it's been common knowledge that a leak in the pool started more than a decade. I should say that it's been knowledge that there was a leak. About ten year ago, ten years ago, uh, an attempt was made to find that leak with a camera scoping system. However, uh, the investigation failed to find the location or the cause of the leak. Our pool holds about three hundred and ninety thousand gallons as stated. And a normal evaporation rate uh would be a total usage and fillage of about one million or less. And that was confirmed again by uh the letter from J E O uh projects, if you had a tan chance to read that. Um. To date, well, I want to say because of that excess uh. Uh, water loss, it cost about twenty six thousand six hundred and eighty dollars as near as I can calculate. Um, that's just in the two million that we lose. Um, action to date, uh, as you got the letter from Andrew of J E O. Uh, it kind of explained his investigation and we had met with him and some of his ideas. Uh, to improve the pool and perhaps uh find the leak. Uh, but more thoroughly, we had a letter, an investigation by Burbak Aquatics. And that letter and proposal was included in uh the package as well. Um. In that proposal, uh, there's many stages. Uh, I thought it was thoroughly done explaining those stages, uh, including both when the pool is empty. And when the pool is full, including uh. Uh, dyes running through there and divers in there trying to track the leak. Um, I don't know if you have any questions about that. I had contacted. Uh, Burbax and asked them when they could actually do that testing. Uh, and they assured me that it could be done uh by in, prior to the end of April. Uh, depending, of course, of when the council would uh make the recommendation to go ahead and do this. Um, source of funding, unfortunately, uh, this, you know, kind of all came about after the fact. After the uh C I P uh proposals were made. So we are struggling a little bit to find the source of funding since that uh proposal is approximately sixty two thousand dollars. You have any questions?
Questions, anyone? Uh, um, Bob, when they. It seems fairly recent in my memory, but when the pool was repainted.
Yes, we did that last year, that is correct.
But wasn't there, I, I guess I'm not thinking last year, but. Prior to that, a number of years ago, that process was not.
No, the, the only thing that they had done that I can figure out and find notes on is that one corner was reconstructed. It was replastered, and I'm sure they probably repainted it at that time.
That's probably what I'm.
Yeah, but. You know, it's unfortunately, it was kind of, it was a patch job, you know, it's cement patching, so. You can kind of, your mind's eye can picture it, and that's exactly how it looks. You know, it's very rough. It does not hold the paint well. All the seams that we have to, we constantly try to re-plaster that ourselves. The, the pool is really showing its age. Um, and uh, the letter from the constituent is. You know, the grouting on the side where the tiles are. Uh, that's, that was noted uh in J E O's uh report. Now, that is also an issue. One, because you can't get those tiles anymore. So we're kind of. Um. Have a, a substitute that's not exactly the same. Um, but it, it's working, but as the old ones break, uh, we're, we're not replacing it with originals because they don't make those anymore. So. It, it is showing its age.
Questions, comments?
I have a comment. Uh, Bob has said that they are struggling with where to find a budget of sixty two thousand dollars. To do the study, and that would not do a correction. And I guess I would talk, I would ask the council. Probably, I guess, two years ago. When we talked about the amount of ARPA funds we were going to receive. We set aside seventy five thousand dollars. For broadband to, to address broadband issues in town. I think brought, there has been some movement on addressing broadband issues in town. And that movement has not actually. In, involved any city monies or any ARPA monies. So my question of the council would be. You know, I, I understand that seventy five is sitting there. But, you know, I think the pool isn't important. And, and I know that sixty two thousand dollars won't fix the pool. It'll just get a study that tells us how much more money we need to fix the pool. But if we don't have the study, we're never going to know how much it's going to cost. So I, I don't know. I would ask staff to look at that ARPA funding. That was seventy five thousand dollars for broadband and perhaps um. That could be a significant portion if there are other funds that might work too. But at least that might be a part of a significant amount that could be used because, you know.
Yes, and I thank you for that. And I would add to that, that since um. Since the packet went out, it has been determined that um the park imp, these would not be. Uh, an eligible source of funding for this project. So uh, so we are looking at the. Um, donations there that are available, but uh, but the park impact fees would not be.
So I don't know how other council members feel about the ARPA funds and redirecting their use. I mean. It was our decision, kind of by consensus, that that's kind of how we parse them out. But perhaps this has risen to a greater need as. The broadband issue has come to, at least from what I read and what I hear. I think there has been um the movement in the community relative to improvements in. In uh broadband choice at least.
Any other questions or comments? Ken?
Yes, um, I just want to get clear on this. So this proposal would be the hiring of two firms, is that correct?
That is correct. Burbak would oversee, you know, because they are a pool engineer. Firm, and then the other firm is more of the contractor doing the work. Now Burbak uh has already. Uh, I've already provided the, the old plans and they've copied all the plans and they actually. Uh, lay out uh what the uh steps would be. And then Rico goes in and, and they did uh what the actual labor and all the testing would be.
So in the sample motion then. It says to hire an engineer and who's the engineer?
Uh, I, I, I put it in there as sample motion so that you could see uh Burbak. I was hoping that uh. When I had first drafted this, that J E O would also come in with a. Plan, but they have since said, no, they really, they only design new pools. So I was. Right now, it would be Burbak. That's, I've reached out to three or four different ones and I just simply have not got a response.
Then you have the words unnecessary contractors, so. In two weeks, uh. Who would the necessary contractors be? Would you know that?
Well, uh, right now it would be Rico. Rico, I don't even know if I'm saying that right. Yes, that one. That's what it meant, Ken.
Okay.
Any questions, anyone? All right, then we need one more motion. Move to adjourn. Yeah, I'll second. All right, we have a motion in a second and we'll vote.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.